Second class township code requires that be supervisors that appoint the double replacement. But in a lot of municipalities, in my opinion, they recognize that in the modern world, the tax collector is an anachronism that we ought to do without. But if one is elected and one is qualified by postponing the bond and going to school, we have an elected tax collector in a job where the alternative services are all professional and corporate in nature.
So we have the ability to assign a replacement if there was a resignation?
If there was a resignation.
We have a responsibility to our residents to make sure that tax bills are, it's not our responsibility, but we have a responsibility to our residents to make sure that the taxes are, the bills are going out on time. Well, I guess it's not our responsibility, but as representatives-
The responsibility of getting that money.
Well, that too, that's true.
Without that, the budget means nothing.
Yeah. We can't impeach if they're not doing their job because they're an elected official.
It's the general assembly that has to impeach.
So the only thing we can do is file lawsuit asking them to do their job in a very broken down manner?
And take us out of the position of asking what's going on and allowing a judge to do that for us.
And when you talk about the budgeted money, I think the real estate taxes that we normally collect are just short of $2 million.
And the county tax, which is our one.
And that money's budgeted this year for, you know, multiple projects and expenditures. So-
Time expenditures.
Yes, so with the lack of that coming in or the guarantee that it's going to come into the process, that becomes very problematic.
So unlike last year, we should have the bills out on time this year?
Yeah.
Because of what you did.
Thanks to our manager, our little item schedule, they'll be in the mail by March 1st.
So by, they'll be, oh, they have to be in the mail by March 1st.
That's our target, March 1st. They'll be in there. The bill date will be March 1st. It'll be on the way March 1st.
That's so that there's the discount and the time for that, because last year I remember it was eight days.
It was extended, was it? So then we had to extend it.
We, the body, had to extend it here and then the county had to extend it as well. So there was a lot of extra.
Last year, if you recall, they didn't get out in time because there was a lot of fingers being pointed about the Lake and Hyrum Fund. This year, I don't know what the excuse is, until February 15th, we, the manager were, were the, the only people haven't seen anything. So I don't know what, what, what the excuse would be at all. Luckily, we have a manager that tackled that, and he did our job.
Thank you.
So what's the, do we decide on anything tonight, or is this just conversation?
I advised the tax collector that we're prepared to file a lawsuit as soon as tomorrow. Everything is ready to go. It's, I, stretch it on board.
We've also-
So we can take a motion to do that tonight?
Just, just so we know, so noted, we've also invited the tax collector to three meetings. She attended one via Zoom and the last two she has not attended.
That is correct. Every time I have communicated with her, she's been invited to attend this meeting.
So I'll make a motion to instruct the solicitor to go ahead and file the lawsuit as early as tomorrow morning.
Do we need to add anything to that?
I second that. I think it's our due diligence. That's, that's our warrant to do that. It's a responsibility.
So motion and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion, here's.
Where's Joe Fisher?
That's the way, old man, John.
Oh, did she? Yeah, she did. Oh, I'm so sorry.
John's great.
She passed away two years ago.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just know she was here for all of us.
She was great.
Yeah, she was.
The comment wasn't the nature of a compliment, so no apologies.
Anything else for new business, John?
I guess last time I was here, we, we kind of left Jerry Ozog question as open-ended.
That's old business, not new business.
Oh, excuse me.
So anything from new business?
I don't think so.
All right, old business.
Between new and old business.
Well, new is you never brought it up before. Old business stuff you're taking out of the closet and talking about.
Well, I'm old, so it makes it old business.
I didn't say that.
I didn't. Yes, last time I was here, we, the board discussed a little, little bit briefly about Jerry Ozog use with our, our emergency services, fire companies, in a instructional way, perhaps for the board. You know, I had had the ability to meet with him with the board. I think it's going back more than three years now. And, you know, I, I know that Tommy had reached out to him, had some conversations, but I'm not sure whether you gentlemen feel that there's, there's a need to, to gain more knowledge here at this time or not. You know, I, I understand that we've got a consolidation of fire companies in the works with two of them. And, you know, I think maybe there, there might be some questions out there about how to proceed that he might be helpful with. So I just wonder if you have any, any thoughts on all that.
I'd like to hear from the fire chiefs, and maybe that's on me for not reaching out from the outside of here, but I'd like to hear from, from them, not just our three, but the surroundings as well, as to what their thoughts are on that. I mean, I don't know what Jerry Ozog costs. Maybe, maybe I'm an old school guy. I think that, I think all of our chiefs are men, grown men. I think, I'd at least like to attempt a gathering of those chiefs together, not just our three, but, and sit down and figure out what we want to accomplish as the township and the neighboring township. I don't know what I don't know from a fire perspective. And Jerry Ozog would be a good mediator between my ignorance and the chiefs. But I'm not afraid to have a conversation with all those chiefs and maybe we could have a, a conversation that will come to the same fruition as having Jerry come and not having to pay for it. Does that make sense? So I'd like to explore having, I wish, I don't think, we don't have anybody here right now chief-wise, but I would, you know, I've seen, I've lived in East Cocalco for almost 20 years. I've seen some highs and lows between our fire departments. I think there's, you know, I, again, I don't know what I don't know, but I, I would like personally, just as the new guy, to sit down with all of them in a setting and see if we can hash some things out. And maybe it's good, maybe it's not good. I don't know. And if we can't hash it out, then well, I guess we'll have to be, figure out as a board if we're going to pay somebody to come in and help us hash it out if we can't handle it. That's just my-
So let me ask you.
Trying to inject common sense in some of this stuff.
Let me ask you this.
Okay.
Because I wanted to do that two years ago when I first started too, but-
All right.
I was kind of told to stay away from that. And I, I like talking to people. It's something I love doing, as you do. What do you want to hash out? I'm just like curious. We're having a conversation here, right? Like, what, what's, what's your end goal? Like, what is our end goal? You know, I, I see, for example, today, you know, the Martins', Martins', Crochers were called fire, right? There was 80 responding units from all over the place and everyone was working together and they did a fantastic job to finally put it out. They all went home and I think the chief of Akron said only one firefighter was injured. So when, when they're to the call, they all work together and they all get the job done. And I, and I also, when I heard his interview on WGAL, he said there was only one paid fire department there from all of them, it was Manheim Township. But what, what, what is our end goal here? I mean, we have, we have multiple companies running in East Cocalco. So we, we just, we, you know, I, I spoke to the chief from Reinhold's, one day, I think it was a Friday, and he, he's all about communication and talks. He said, you know, he said he could come to me anytime just to say hi and, you know, tell us what they're about and what they do in our township, because as you know, they run in our township too. And, you know, I, I think it's a great idea to reach out and at least put a face to a name and just a general discussion. But I don't know how, I don't know if I want to put my fingers in the cookie jar, because they know what they're doing, they're running their own thing, and I don't know how much you really want to get involved in, in their thing, you know, in their, in all that. But to your point, I don't know about all the box alarms and this and that, like, and that's what I was told, correct me if I'm wrong, that I was told that the board also decides who runs, who doesn't run in our township and all that, correct?
So the second-class township code requires you to decide, to make the appointments, to designate, and the jargon, the slang in the community is who's first due in a geographic area, both for fire and for EMS. But the Martins' Fire is a great example of that. We don't fight our own fires with only our own companies. Countywide communications, 911, and the mutual aid compact among the companies then provides that we get the service that we need. Again, I was told that Martins was a four alarm fire, so among themselves, they have decided who will respond for the first alarm, second alarm, third, fourth, down the list. Again, you heard me joke here when we discussed this before. As a result of countywide 911 and mutual aid compact, we really do have a regional fire service, a countywide fire service. The only thing that they lack is funding and administration. And, and, you know, that's where the discussions on mergers and consolidations are taking us. The companies are learning that by making themselves bigger and consolidating, they can manage the administration and the funding better. Manheim Township is a great example. It's actually a hybrid company. It is a paid company that also uses volunteers. That represents three fire companies that were all each operating independently, not unlike here, as community nonprofits, which merged into a single company operated by the township as a public service, but still using volunteers. Blue Rock Fire District is a similar, but different situation where Manheim Township and Millersville Borough created an intergovernmental entity called Blue Rock Fire District, who are, who is contracted with volunteers from what was formerly, former of the four companies that merged all into Blue Rock Fire Rescue. So the contract provides that those services are fully funded by public dollars from Millersville Borough and Manheim Township, flowing through the fire district. And there are all kinds of other examples of these hybrid regionalizations. I think I also mentioned Keystone Valley, which is in the west area of Chester County. I've lost count. I think it started with five municipalities and six fire companies, and several fire companies have been added to it since. So, you know, what's the interest of the municipality? The interest of the municipality is that you have to have an appointed fire service or services for the entire geographic area of the township. What's happening on the EMS side is, again, similarly, you must have a first due EMS service for the entire geography of the township, but the EMS services are now negotiating with the municipalities. Last night in the, in one of the Dolphin County municipalities I represent, Lifeline was there presenting their proposal. You know, we will agree to be your first due, but we're looking for a five-year contract. This is the price for the first three years and this is the price for the next two years after that.
So you asked me what my end game was? First thing that comes to mind is the house divided can outstand, right? And I'm not saying that our departments are divided, but from an outside perspective, I just, I think we need to have a conversation. By law, that said, we need to have, we need to have fire services. By law, we need to provide that as a township. If we don't help correct this now, 10 years, five years, who knows? We'd be looking at it full-time, right? And that would destroy us from a tax perspective. We, we can't afford a full-time fire department. So my end game is to not ever have to get to that point. Now, there are a lot of things that are up against our fire departments right now. They're all volunteer. So we have, we have, and I'll just briefly, I think we have a cultural issue with people wanting to serve their community now. So I'd say the average age of our firefighters is in their 40s and 50s is the average age, I would guess. So we have a volunteer problem. So most of our fire departments are getting short on firefighters. We have a money problem, so that's where some of the bickering and arguing comes in because nobody wants to give up the territory because maybe they're getting certain donations from certain areas, because it's all comes down to money and trying to keep the fire department moving ahead, keeping apparatus that are now a million dollars, all of these things. You know, again, the age, 10 years from now, that average is going to go to 60. And so I'd like to really get an idea from the chiefs who've been doing it a long time as to what their ideas are. And maybe Jerry Ors, Jerry would be a good idea because that's what he does too. But I'd really like to just see our surrounding departments, six, seven, whoever we can get together and just have a conversation about what can we do about volunteers? If it's our job to figure out who's first due, let's do it with common sense. You know, if first due for West Cocalco is on Schwartzville Road, obviously because they're a mile away, then yeah, you know, I think that's, you know, just because it's East Cocalco Township doesn't mean that they shouldn't do first due just because they're outside. I think all of the fire departments, I know all the fire departments have, I mean, even one of our chiefs here in Reamstown said, you know, we, we're doing this to serve the community. We're not doing it for any other reason than that. And just to your point, when you said, I'm doing it to serve, that's what all of our firefighters are doing. And so I think if we can maintain that as a foundation, we can have a good conversation. We can talk about what's going on, we can talk about the merger, we can talk about callbacks, we can talk about expenses, we can talk about apparatus and sharing all that, working together as a team and coming together. I don't know if we need to drop $20,000 for Jerry unless we can't come together as a team. But I'm more than willing to learn from our firefighters, what they need, what needs to happen, and then step up as leaders and supervisors here and figure out how we can make that work for them. And I, I don't know, again, what I don't know, but the only way I'm going to learn that is if I have conversations with the chiefs, but I'd rather have them together in a community setting like this, or whatever we need to do so that we can hash things out and maybe put somebody on the spot and figure out how we're going to work together as a team.
You can avoid them in the next public meeting.
Or, or here's maybe another idea. You know, the board could give you an action item to go down that road-
Okay.
-with the chiefs on your own. Come back with a written word. You'll come back with a lot more knowledge than you're going out with. And, you know, I would be, be fine with you taking that initiative and, you know, allaying some of your concerns and, you know, come back, let us know what you, what you found out.
I'm all about trying to save money. If we can, you can save money by having some conversations, even if they're hard ones. I'm about to know that, you know, so.
Yeah. You know, you just said, you said about apparatus costing a million and stuff. You know, when I, when I began in 2022, that was one thing I was talking about at the beginning, where I feel, through the PSC boot camp, I met a lot of people that are now supervisors, that are volunteers in certain parts of Lancaster and Dolphin County, volunteer firefighters. One actually, actually happened to be a chief at a, one of the companies. And, you know, at lunch, we just started discussing stuff like this, right? And, you know, he said that a lot of municipalities are setting up like accounts where, let's say they put $100,000 a year in, and that was dedicated for apparatus. So, you know, if they had four departments and, you know, PSC apparatus came up in five years, there would be 500,000 in there. But it created a lot of discussion amongst all the fire departments because now it's not about what they want, it was about what they needed. And the municipality still had the money in their account, so in a way, they still had a say per se to, you know, be like, okay, I agree with this or not, you know? I'm not going to just give you X amount of dollars to go buy a new, whatever kind of apparatus that we don't need, you know?
Well, I think that's for the murder house too.
But, but just to my point-
Smokes Town, Reamstown, they don't need to, you know, they can-
Well, to my, to my point, nothing ever happened, nothing came of that. And I know our fire chiefs, when they've come in, you know, what they ask always, you know, is our donation going to get bigger? You know, you know, is it, you know, is that? And it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to picture the big picture because I, me personally, like you, I really don't know what their end goal is. You know, we, this board, well, the majority of the board decided for the first time to donate $6,000 to, $8,000 to Reinhold's ambulance. Reinhold's ambulance answers the calls in East Cocalco. Two years ago or a year and a half ago, they came in asking for, for money because they were getting new, the new ambulance, and we had already closed the budget and we didn't, we didn't do nothing, we didn't give them anything. So this year during budget season, I brought that up, I thought, we need to give back because they're responding to calls in, in our municipality to our constituents. You know, I live right up here in the hill. If Reamstown can't get here, maybe, I don't know, they're probably next closest in Ephraim, so I, I feel like we have to do our due diligence and help them out because, you know, as, as we said, they're all financially struggling. And we upped the donation to our Reamstown ambulance as well, another 5,000.
If we don't figure this out now for them, not for them, but with them, we're going to have a lot bigger problems in a couple of years when volunteers start getting old and aging out. So we need to start having our conversations now because if we don't figure out how to keep them moving, we're going to have some, you know, the entire community's going to have some issues.
Are you willing to take that action item?
I, nope, I love talking to people, so I'm bad. Yeah, I'll reach out to all the chiefs. No problem with that. Give me a little bit of time, but yeah.
I'm, I'm good with that. What about you, Romanza?
Yeah, I'm fine with that too. Either that or we can avoid them here, you know, to one of our short, or one of our shorter meetings, the first meeting of the month, it seems like.
Now, we can, can we add just-
It's a public setting and we can ask questions, they can ask questions, the public can ask questions and I think, me personally, me, this is my opinion, right? Better have conversations like that in a public setting versus me and you, if you were a chief per se, and I'd be having a conversation with you, I can interpret what you told me, how I want to interpret it, and you can walk away and call the next chief and say, oh, so-and-so said this, and that's not the case. So just to have everything out on the table and everyone hears the same song, you know, I don't see nothing wrong with a setting like this, just throw questions out.
What I'm hearing from Dan is he's got, get up to speed a little bit on some details, if that, if that's fair.
That's true.
And maybe that would be better in a private setting with, with all the chiefs there to start the game, just so, you know.
I like, that's your, your decision. I'm going to have the conversations because I want to learn and I'll do that on my own. But I also see what the, I mean, it's much different when you have a group setting. Just for example, we want you to come up here. It's, it's a lot harder to throw things out there if you're just one-on-one and you're talking about somebody else. And I'd rather just hash it out, get it all out there and, and come together with an agreement together. So could we set up, I'll have the conversations on my own, you don't have to have an action item or anything, and I'll learn on my own so that I can be somewhat educated when we have, can we create a workshop? We'll, we'll have a public workshop and we'll call it the public, I don't know, public firefighter, you know, East Cocalco, Public Cocalco Region Firefighter Meeting. And then it'll be a public meeting, it'll be a workshop, it'll just be nothing but chiefs talking, us and, and listening, and the public bringing their, you do something like that.
I was told to bring armor to that meeting two years ago when I said the exact same thing you're saying right now. And I was told to stay with, I'm, I'm a lone boy.
I love the chiefless.
I love the chiefless.
I'll bring my armor too.
But again-
Well, this gentleman said he was a chief at one point, right?
I, I am a forefather of the township, the fire department. We were four fire companies, to three years.
To three years.
To three years.
We put four fire companies together. One Fire Company, the Lake Park Fire Company, the West Madison Fire Company, and then absorbed the West Lawn Fire Company.
As a community nonprofit or as a township department?
They are, they are now a municipal owned-
That's what I thought, yeah.
Career law of care.
So the municipality funds it, but the responders are still volunteers?
Right.
That's, so Lancaster Township and East Donovan Township have done that. One fire company in each municipality, fully funded by the municipality, but all volunteers.
I just want to hear what our chiefs want to do. And they've been here a long time. I just, you know, it's obvious what Smokes Town, Reamstown is trying to do here with their merger, I don't know if you realize that, sir.
A consolid-
Well, yes, thank you. So I want to hear what they want and I'd like it, you know, if there's, I think it's better to hash it out like men in a setting and you just do it.
Do you want to gather information first before something like this would be set up?
What's the difference?
Yeah, I'll learn and I'll just, no, no, I'll make both.
He might, he might have three inches of questions to ask them after they come here and talk.
Right.
And he could meet them later.
Should we just set something up in March?
Personally, I'd say you set it up here and then if you have other questions to follow, you can do that, or me or him, personally. But that's just me. You guys can decide whatever you want.
I mean, it's, Jeff, I see what you're saying and I will, I will continue to learn in all of my free time. But I do think we should, instead of just saying, maybe we should try to come up with a time, you know, it doesn't, we don't have to decide a date tonight, I don't- You know, it doesn't, we don't have to decide a date tonight, I don't think, but maybe sometime in mid to late March, we have this meeting. And if anybody knows the chiefs, come up, we're, I'm blowing the list. I know all three of us are going to.
Tommy, how's the first meeting on March looking?
Um, well, that's the Stevens Fire.
That's a big, that's a bigger setting.
Folks for ninety-one Denver.
Okay, that's it?
Uh, there's a lot of transfers.
So, so since we're at, since we're at a bigger setting, that's the perfect option to do it.
Okay.
My opinion. Uh, Tommy has a hundred fifty-nine things on his list to do. Instead of adding a hundred and sixty, I, I could send an email to each chief, attach us, the board and Tommy, and invite them to that meeting. Uh, and we'll, we'll put them on the agenda.
Okay.
If you guys are okay with it.
As long as you're already having a.
You couldn't open a conversation. Yeah, well.
The workshop would be more apt, apropos for that.
Well, well, we will have to, it's not a five-minute conversation.
Correct.
Um, but, but also, you know, I'm, I'm a big believer, it's, uh, when it's meant to be, it's meant to be. I didn't know we were actually at Stevens Fire Company, but it's meant to be because it's a, it's a lot bigger room than this and I'm sure we wouldn't fit in this room. So again, I didn't know, but I guess this conversation happened at the right time and we can make this decision now.
That's fine. The world is moving way too fast around us and it's time for us to start tear up a bandaid and figure out, put our big boy pants on and figure some stuff out.
Sometimes you can't keep kicking the can down the road.
It's time. We don't have time to mess around, so.
It's nice to have a conversation, at least to have an honest conversation.
So, yeah.
That's, that's, that's what I, and I know you're a big believer in that and, and Jeff is as well, and that's what I love about this board. We can all have an honest conversation and go home at the end of the day. So it'd be nice to have an honest conversation in a public setting and throw it out there. Okay?
And just for an, bit of additional information, if, if L N P's, uh, numbers aren't correct, I saw that in Penn Township now, they've added a two-hundred dollar tax credit for their volunteer firefighters there.
Yeah, that's something else I wanted to talk to them about too, is, you know, certainly.
I think Strasburg Borough was, was in on that maybe the end of last year. So, um, there is still talk of that, comparing spots in the county.
Just so I have it right, we have Reamstown, Stevens, Smokes Town, Denver, Adamstown, uh, Shennick. Is Shennick running our town? They do, right?
No.
Reinhold's, Reinhold's.
Reinhold's.
Reinhold's and, uh.
Five Point.
Five Point.
Has like two addresses, I think.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Right?
Does that for to come over Garnes Five Road anymore?
Martin Dale Mike running the area.
What's that?
Martin Dale Mike running the area.
I thought it was five point.
There are, there are ten first responses. Okay.
I don't have my, I don't mind having two hundred fire departments come in either. Well, if they come into township, that's.
Well, I.
Well, what I mean is, what I mean is, Shaq.
Let's not invite everybody.
All neighbors, right?
There we go.
There you go.
But they might not, they might not like what you're saying. Well, I guess, uh, I'll do that, if you guys are okay with it.
I love how it went from me to the red sound.
Well, you, you should send me. But you wanted to meet with them. I'm inviting them to come to the meeting.
As a chair, I think that's perfect.
And I'll have you start the conversation. You're the conversation starter.
Alright, sounds good.
First date. How's that?
Alright.
I never start a conversation for first date. Alright.
I'll bring my park go out too.
Somebody bring coffee.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll do that. Anything else for old business?
No, that's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good discussion. Public comments, uh, for non-agenda items. Again, it's public comment for non-agenda items. If you have anything, please come forward.
I'm for, I, um, the bridge in Reamstown Road, cause I've still closed, so.
No, no, reopened today.
Good, okay.
That's my concern, just tomorrow is Green Dragon.
There's Jersey, they installed Jersey barriers today, so it's open for, for traffic now.
If it was closed tomorrow, that would be the traffic.
It was great. Thank you.
You do have an expert in the road who has a lot of mountain.
Sam, we, uh, I wanna compliment, uh, road department for the cleaning that rose off in this, with this heavy snow. But I have an issue with this also because I think last year, people were complaining about getting their driveway plowed shut. And you had sent out in the newsletter how you were supposed to clean off before your driveway, so then when they plow, they won't plow your driveway shut. Well, I did that, but I also have a trucker hybrid in my yard and they continually come down through, and this was, I cleaned off like eight feet on both ways on my driveway and I had like six feet out into the road. When they plowed this last time, they were coming down that fast. They had these big boulders and they didn't just come onto my driveway. They were up on my driveway and that stuff was heavy. So I think there's an issue with them driving way too fast when they're plowing. And they're also doing exactly what they, they said they wouldn't do when we're supposed to clean off before they get to our driveway. So that, that's the issue I have with that. Other than that, other than that, they did a good job, but that's something that should be addressed to the parks, to the your department there on the road.
Why don't you give Tommy your information after the meeting?
I'll, I'll make sure to address it.
Because, you know, there's a lot more people where I live at and it, every one of them is the same thing. Cause I looked at it after he went down through there and says, "Why, why did I clean off like that? Because it doesn't do any good." You know, then I get all that up on my driveway.
Well, if you wouldn't say it, we wouldn't know. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and I'm sure the manager will communicate with our director of public works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Our next meeting, uh, will be held Thursday, March seventh at seven PM at the Stevens Fire Company, ninety-one Stevens Road. I will make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second that.
Motion of second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for attending.
Yep.
How you doing?
My good friend.
It wasn't a bad season.
It was a long year.
Hey, you too.
I'm the chief here.
I'm the chairman.
I'll be there.
Yeah, you're better off than taking care of yourself.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you.